2017, it's 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, can we get a roll call, please?
Davidson, Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Okay, before we go into Lifetime Achievement Awards, we do have one special award that we're going to get out of the way. Counselman?
Thank you. This is a Certificate of Recognition and Grateful Recognition of five years of dedicated service to the city of Burlington as of April 23rd, 2017. We hereby present James Furno with this Certificate of Recognition. Signed Shane A. McCambo, Mayor. What do you think of that? Pretty cool.
Sir, please start sticking around now.
I'm on five more.
Jim, would you please have a word?
Thank you.
That's it?
He's a jerk.
I think we have some other things that are pretty important tonight. I'm more enthused with what's coming on here after this, so it has been a pleasure being here. It's been a great community. Our family has really come to enjoy Burlington.
Go ahead.
So thanks.
All right. Well, I appreciate you. Hopefully, we can sign another one of those here pretty soon, so. Next, we have Lifetime Achievement Awards. This is a really special deal. It's huge, and one of my favorite people is actually getting one of these. I let him borrow $50 back in the 70s. I'm still waiting to get it back, so. But if, is Dana Atkins?
John.
That's the city manager's fault, by the way. Dana, could you come and give us some information on that, please?
I sure can. I'm Dana Johnston, and I am, right now, the Esquire of District Deputy for Grand Lodge, which in the Elks world means that we're the federal government, and our local lodges are all the state governments, so that kind of gives you an idea. We have a Lifetime Achievement Award that we dedicate to our Elks members that have done above and beyond. Some of the qualifications are that they have to put in over 4,000 hours in their community. And so what I do is basically, it's through our Drug Awareness Program, which I am the State Southeast Chair for that, and what we do is we submit a form that tells about all of these wonderful hours that these people put in. This year, our lodge had the only three people in the state of Iowa that qualified for 4,000 hours, of volunteer hours, for their community, the Elks, and whatever else they felt like. So it was a great honor. We submitted it, and they got the Lifetime Achievement Award, which is actually presented by the President of the United States. We were very excited to get it, and so anyways, our three award winners are Tom Walls.
Yeah.
And we all know Tom. He does many things for the community. He helps with Snowball, he helps with all of our Elks stuff, he does the Bridge Run, Steamboat Days, anything anybody wants him to do, Tom's there.
Yes, he is.
We also had two other that work in cahoots together, a Mr. and a Mrs., Matt McChesney and Jessica McChesney. And what's so special about them is that Matt and Jessica work as a team with the Girl Scouts, and they have so many girls that they have done cookies with, they have done Techno Camp, which is actually sponsored by the Elks. No technology at that camp, the old time camp you do. They also do, you will see them on the grounds around the Port of Burlington and around the riverfront for about two to three weeks, because these are the Steamboat Days people that put up their grounds, make sure that all the vendors are where they need to be, and are there from usually around 6:00 to 7:00 in the morning till Steamboat Days closes. And along with that, they do a lot of things for the Elks, and they do Movie Night with me. We all know the five movie is coming back with the downtown Burlington and the Elks. These are also two people that help with that. 4,000 hours, each person, so we have 12,000 hours of community volunteers right here, and they really deserve that. So thank you.
Well, all right. On top of that, we have the Lifetime Achievement Awards that we would like to present to you here in front of the council and those that have come. I'm going to present these to you one at a time, and make sure that you get some pictures, and I'd like for them to get pictures with everybody, if that's all right. But this first one, it says Lifetime Achievement Award, it says, and these are all the same, so I'm just going to read this once, and then I'll call the names, if that's all right with you. It says, "With grateful recognition, the Corporation of National and Community Service and the Office of the President of the United States honors Tom Walls, Matt McChesney, and Momma Jessica." Man, I'll tell you, that's awesome, a husband and wife team, that's fantastic. So anyways, this first one goes to Tom Walls, "With the President's Lifetime Achievement Award for their lifelong commitment to building a stronger nation through volunteer service." Tom Walls is like gum underneath my shoe. He's everywhere. Hold on, everybody's got to get in on this. You get on, I'll take the picture.
It's all right.
Come on, Jim. Just stay right there, my friend. Thank you, sir. Give it for Tom Walls. Tom, I would give you a bracelet, but I know you got to go. What's that? You got it. You guys are brutal, man. Moving next, we have a presentation, MS Run, The U.S., Amanda Scott.
Well, I first wanted to say thank you for having me here. So MS Run the U.S., it's a non-for-profit organization that I found, I stumbled upon, where 18 individuals run from California all the way to New York over a three-month period. So we run over 3,100 miles, and the reason they do this is to raise money and awareness for multiple sclerosis. It's kind of a big deal to me, because both my mom and sister suffer from MS. You know, it's always been a struggle, you know, of what more can I do for them, you know, what more can I do that would matter? So I thought, heck, I'll go run six marathons in six days from Des Moines to Davenport, and hopefully, people can't help but notice. So one of my big goals is to raise 10,000. That's kind of a thing when you get, you have to go through an interview process to be picked as the 18-person team. My goal is to raise $10,000, so about three-fourths of the way there. So the organization as a whole hit their 1 million mark today, so, or not today, but this year, this session, so it's pretty exciting. The reason this whole organization started was that, her name is Ashley Snyder, she is out of Wisconsin, her mom suffered from MS, and she was actually the seventh woman in the United States to run Clear Across America. And she ran Clear Across America to try and raise money to support people with MS and just put it out there. So she wasn't happy with the amount of money, so she raised, so she started MS Run the U.S. and thought, you know, we can bring a lot more people into this. So again, I appreciate you letting me do this. If you guys want to watch me, I start June 25th in Des Moines, and hopefully, I can run 176 miles.
Well, I want to give you a bracelet, and I'm not going to stop with the bracelet. I'm also going to give you some money. I just don't have any cash on me, but I'm all in.
Totally fine.
And I tell you what, we appreciate what you're doing.
I appreciate it.
Here, website.
Right, right. Yeah, and if you're interested in hearing more about it or donating, you can go to the website, it's just simply msruntheus.org. If you go to the Relay Team for 2017, you can specifically donate to one of the 18 people. So thank you again for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
I just wanted to add one thing. This is.
Reverse, reverse.
All of my kids and grandkids and spouses and my wife are here tonight to show support for my daughter, and I'm extremely proud of all of them.
Let's have them stand up.
Thanks for coming, and if everybody wants to stand up so they can see who you are.
I would love to.
Not you. Guys, you can go ahead and go. Give me a break.
This one doesn't like people to clap for.
I apologize, I'm a bad clapper. You'll work on that. Next, we have some proclamations. Our first one tonight is Police Week.
Your Honor, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States has designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the police officers of America have worked devotedly, selflessly on behalf of the people of this nation, regardless of the peril or hazards to themselves, these officers have protected the lives and properties of fellow Americans. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of the police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14th to May 20th, 2017, to be Police Week. In recognition of the service given by the men and women who night and day stand guard in our midst to protect us through the enforcement of our laws, we therefore call upon all citizens in the community and especially honor and show our support and appreciation for police officers of this city and their families for the dedication and sacrifices they make by deed, remark, and attitude. Signed and sealed the 15th day of May, 2017, Shane A. McCambo, Mayor. Chief.
First and foremost, Mayor and Council, we appreciate you taking the time to not only recognize Police Week, but more importantly, Police Officers Memorial Day. You know, it's been kind of rough on law enforcement the last couple of years, but to get you up to date, you know, unfortunately, this year, we've had 48 in the line of duty deaths, and that's up 30% from last year. And last year was kind of on a record pace, so not necessarily going in the right direction. So keep them in your thoughts and prayers. But more importantly, last year, we had pictures of two fallen officers from the Burlington Police Department that we had redone and enlarged, and they're on display at the police department, and they'll be on display at the police department forever. I just think it's important that we don't ever forget. And so just very briefly here, I want to just take a couple of minutes and talk about those two officers. And first is Captain Joseph Freely. Captain Freely's end of watch was Saturday, December 18th, 1926. He was shot and killed when he attempted to stop a man who was suspect of having a gun. The suspect shot Captain Freely in the head, and the captain fired, striking the suspect in the hip. So again, Captain Joseph Freely gave his life in the line of duty for the community of Burlington, Iowa, ending on Saturday, December 18th, 1926. And our second officer is Captain Frederick Sauer, whose end of watch was May 27th, 1934. Captain Sauer was shot and killed after he and another officer responded to a report of a burglary at a store at 5:30 AM, which was right downtown in downtown Burlington. Captain Sauer covered the front door, his other officers covered the rear door, the burglars left out the front door and opened fire with a shotgun, and fatally wounded Captain Sauer. So again, please remember, Captain Frederick William Sauer is end of watch was Sunday, May 27th, 1934. And as I go through the officer memorial page, you know, people post reflections, and I lost my brother-in-law in the line of duty, so I kind of look at those reflections, and I found one that I thought, you know, this couldn't have been said any better, and it was said by a detention officer out of Texas. And he said, "Time may have passed, but you are not forgotten. I believe as long as someone remembers you or speaks your name, you are still with us." So thank you for your heroism, and God bless. So those are really important words to me and the department, and I thank everybody in law enforcement. So thank you for your time. Thanks for remembering. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, enhancing districts and communities, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Burlington has an abundance of historic treasures, including national and local registered properties, and the Burlington Historic Preservation Commission promotes the preservation of historic landmarks and historic districts within the city of Burlington. And whereas this place matters is a theme for National Historic Preservation Month 2017, co-sponsored by City of Burlington Historic Preservation Commission and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 2017 as Historic Preservation Month in the city of Burlington, and call upon the people of Burlington to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Signed and sealed this 15th day of May, 2017, Shane A. McCambo, Mayor. And this is going to Steve Freer.
We got a picture. Where did I say? I think about you on the rooftop, man, doing the loops.
Once and only once. Just very briefly, on behalf of the city's Historic Preservation Commission, we invite everybody out to the depot this coming Sunday, May 21st, at 1:00. We're going to be doing an open house, co-sponsored with Friends of the Depot, to show off all the work that's been done to transform the waiting room out there. So we'll have a lot of displays, before and after pictures. Hope everybody can make it.
Snacks?
I believe so.
Just checking, my friend.
Thank you, Steve.
At 1:00. 1:00 this Sunday till about 2:30 or so.
Good deal.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have one more proclamation. Whereas in Iowa, there are numerous youth in foster care being provided with a safe and stable home, along with the compassion and nurture of a foster family, there's no task more important than ensuring all children in our state grow up healthy and safe. Whereas foster kinship and adoptive families who open their homes and hearts to children during times of crisis play a vital role in helping children and families heal and reconnect, thereby launching young people into successful adulthood. And whereas caring foster families frequently adopt children in foster care, resulting in a continual need for more foster families, all young people in or leaving foster care deserve to have permanent, meaningful connections to caring adults who become a supportive and lasting presence in their lives. And whereas the Iowa Department of Human Services, Iowa Kids Net, the Iowa Foster of Adopted Parents Association, and numerous individuals and organizations work to increase public awareness of the needs of children in foster care, as well as the dedicated and valuable contributions of foster parents. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 2017 as Foster Care Month in the city of Burlington, Iowa, and we urge all Burlington residents to help children and care reach their bright potential. Signed and sealed this 15th day of May, 2017, Shane A. McCambo, Mayor. Peggy Christensen? All right.
I just want to say thank you to all of you for making this month for foster care. Sadly, I wish I could be put out of a job and not have to work with foster homes. I do license foster homes in Des Moines, Henry, and Lee County, and sadly, we are getting referrals every single day, more and more, for foster kids to go into foster homes. So we really do appreciate your time.
We appreciate you coming down. Thank you so much. I've never agreed on anybody going out of a job, but I couldn't agree more, Peggy. Thanks for coming down. Next on the agenda, I'll wait till you guys get on out of here. Thanks for coming down, guys. You guys are winners. Thanks for coming down, guys. Hey, Tom, I'll see you tomorrow? I said, I'll see you.
We got so much kind of, we love Burlington.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual, finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have one resolution, a resolution approving master facilities agreement, including Addendum 1 with Interstate Power and Light Company. We have two public hearings set for June 5th. The first is consideration on a proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement in a principal amount not to exceed $308,956.67. The second is a consideration of a sale property locally known as 1114 Linden Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. And we also have two appointments, John Schultz with the Airport Authority and Jerry Parks Renewable Energy Committee. So we appreciate those. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the Consent Agenda? Okay, council?
None for me.
Can I get a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all of the Senator Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Target. A good second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done. Okay, first night, we have Consideration of Budget Amendment Number 1 for Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Budget. Stephanie?
So Eric's going to put up the resolution up there. This is what was published in the paper on May 4th. Basically, we are increasing the revenues. There are a few items that happened over the course of the year that weren't budgeted. We ended up refunding the GEO 2011 bond for that 7.5 million that was unbudgeted, and then we also ended up borrowing more for our current projects on our 2017B GEO bond. So I'm increasing that by 2.5 million. Waterworks is having a little bit higher charges for services, so we increased that 600,000 also, and then transfers in, or transfers out, sorry. And then on the expenditure side, so the total of those revenues were 11.4 million. On the expenditure side, we're increasing it approximately 9.5 million, and you can see it's broken down by the different function categories. Public safety, that comprises of overtime for fire and police, and then we did hire just three new officers in the month of May and June. Public works, we had a, we replaced the fuel system out of the Public Works building that was unbudgeted, and we did some hiring in the engineering department that caused that one to be a little bit higher. Culture and rec, that's, we're increasing, the majority of that increases for the expenditures on the auditorium. Basically, when we budgeted, we didn't budget all the expenditures that we will put into our books, so revenues will go into our books and the expenditures will come. So the net amount is the same for the auditorium, but I just need to increase the expenditure side for this budget cycle. Also, we bought some charging stations out of our hotel motel tax fund. Again, that was a reimbursement with grant money, but it was an unbudgeted expenditure. And then the rest of the increases in culture and rec are trust funds. That's where people have donated money for a certain cause, such as the Swimming Pool Trust, the Forestry, Little League, North Gorge Trail. Those expenditures, you know, a year and a half out, we don't know exactly what they're going to be. So as we look through our books, what's been expended this year, we increase it to be more accurate. And then our business type increases about 195,000, and that's for our Maslow. There's a little bit in there that we didn't get budgeted, and then we have a sewer mainline repair, and then some property maintenance charges for parking, so. Does anybody have any questions?
What's the net effect, then, looking at the bottom line?
Well, the net effect, if you pull it up, it's that 2 million where the revenues are going to increase over the expenditures for the budgeted.
Thank you. Does that mean, somebody, does that mean anything for, with the adjustments on the amount spent, does that mean anything to us for future development? Does that change any of our plans for the future?
No, I mean, really, the largest thing that's, when you show that revenues are higher than expenditures, so 2.1 million, it's really, we're borrowing money for an FY18 project, so we're, we don't know exactly where the, we do a borrowing at the beginning of the year, so we, our revenues come in differently than expenditures. In regards to where the expenditures, as you're saying, we're doing adjustments, we, our general fund is where the majority of those expenditures are coming in, emergency services, public works, et cetera. We are still on track to pretty much net out about where we had originally budgeted, so we have other revenues where we were in enough categories that we're a little bit over what we had anticipated, that it doesn't impact future budgets.
Go ahead. Counsel. Any comments or concerns from the audience? I see none. Kathleen?
I have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, my friend.
Target.
You're cutting me out, man.
Yeah, I don't want to do that. I don't want to cut you out. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving Budget Amendment Number 1 for Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Budget.
Target.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have Consideration of a 2017 Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan for the Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area.
This is amendment for the Apollo School Building. Previously, under the Urban Renewal Plan, designated demolition as the use activity for the Apollo School. When we were contemplating the future use of the building, we amended the Urban Renewal Plan to include the future use of the building, we amended the urban renewal plan to include potential for demolition of the site with a dollar figure attached to that. Based on the proposal submitted and looking to move forward with redevelopment of the property, we're now amending the urban renewal plan to indicate that the Apollo School Site, currently owned by the city, is planned to be converted into residential units rehabbed. And the city has been asked to provide property tax abatement incentives under the city's downtown tax abatement program. So the amendment just states the use that is being proposed by the developer. This states 40 residential units, and then they're asking to have this property be included in the downtown urban, or tax abatement program.
So that we're not providing any TIF funds towards this project. The reason that we are still doing an amendment to the urban renewal area is that we are using urban renewal law to help, or assist in the process of the disposition of the property, the sale of the property. Some of the mechanisms that are available within urban renewal provide a mechanism that we can use for that sale, and very similar to what we used with the process with...
Manor.
The Manor property, except we're not providing any TIF funds.
So this is just a step in the process?
This is a step in the process. There's two other steps that will go along with this. We've already set a public hearing for June 5th on this, and that would, that public hearing and process would allow for the actual disposition of the property, or sale for $100,000, and will include a development agreement that calls on us as part of it to expand our tax abatement for the downtown area. We'll do that under a separate process. We're not going to start that until you formally approve the sale to the developer. As we go about that, our, the urban renewal district that has about 100 blocks, has the expanded tax abatement that's available for it within that area. The, that expanded tax abatement schedule is, had a sunset on it, I think 2019. I think we did that for a five-year process. With this, we would look to probably extend that maybe three more years to get, give the developer adequate time to make this process happen. Just, just want you to be aware that as, as we amend that, that abatement area, we need to also change the timing on it, so we give him adequate time to do what he's trying to get accomplished.
Does that make sense? It makes sense to me. Do I have any questions or comments from the audience?
I have a question.
Have you come to the, can I have you come to the podium? Give me your name and address, please.
Kelly Hall, 816 Valley. So I'm looking at this TIF area map, and then the PUD development that you're doing, the ridge, it's on the agenda this evening?
Say that again.
Is the planned unit development, the PUD development that you're doing, that you're tiffing, where is that in the map? It's on the agenda this evening?
What, the Apollo High School?
No, not Apollo High School. I'm looking at the TIF map, which I have not seen before, and you're doing a TIF on the planned unit development. It's on the agenda this evening? Is that in the TIF map?
We have a, Eric has a planned unit development that you will be doing an amendment on. That's not using TIF financing, and I don't think it's in this area. We do have another ordinance that's being considered for third reading that we'll have a discussion of as we get to it later on. It does involve TIF, but it does not include a planned unit development.
Okay. So is that in the TIF map that we're seeing?
It's not on there, and this is the, this urban renewal area incorporates, we have several different urban renewal areas. This is the downtown one that you see up here. We also have primarily out along Roosevelt where the remainder of our existing TIFs are, a couple of...
Eric, would you be able to pull that up so I can see it?
I don't have that here.
Okay.
Anybody else from the audience? Any concerns?
Leon Shahean, 1821 Mall Pleasant Street. Alls I can say is, here we go again. We can't do anything in this town without incentives. I just, is this the United States of America versus China where everything is state planned?
You never let me down, Leon. Anybody else from the audience? Comments or concerns? Counsel?
Nothing here.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to close.
Target.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving 2017 amendment to the urban renewal plan for the Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area.
Target.
Let's take it to vote. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, well done. Number 3, it's a consideration of an amendment to ordinance number 3403, an ordinance creating the Arbor View Estates PUD.
Second.
Mr. Teslin?
This is a request to amend the previously approved ordinance that created the Arbor View Estates PUD north of Sunnyside off of Cliff Road. This is residential development. Couple amendments that they've requested that we're looking to change within this PUD include adding two additional attached units on lots 15 and 16. That was previously shown as a single-family lot, looking to do zero lot line development, similar to lots 1 through 14 on the south on that lot. Modifying some of the setbacks on some of the lots to fit within the area, primarily lots 1 through 14. Maintaining a 25-foot front yard setback and 30-foot rear yard setback, that is just flipped from what our normal requirement is in this area, but still maintains the same distance. Lots 15 and 16 having a 25, 20-foot front yard and 15-foot rear yard, and 17 maintaining a 20-foot front yard and 25-foot rear yard on the east. And Lot 19 maintaining a 14-foot setback on the north side, which is an increase based on the drainage concerns from the neighbor to the north. Typically, that would only be seven feet. Other requirement or addition to this PUD is just stating the landscaping open, landscaping open space, requiring a tree to be planted minimum of every 100 feet for the property. And traffic circulation, having an outlot on the north end of the cul-de-sac. Previously, this was preliminary plotted and approved with a roadway dead ending at the north property line of this development. This request is to have a cul-de-sac within the development with an outlot connecting to the north. That would be required to be installed and connected to the north property line at such time as that property to the north develops residentially. The subverter would require to, be required to maintain a letter of credit or other surety for its installation. The other change is the detention area. Previously, Lot 17, which he's looking to have as a single-family lot, was shown as an outlot for detention, and they are expanding their detention pond as shown on the south end of the development on their lot from what was previously shown. So that has been expanded to handle the capacity and allow one additional single-family residential lot on the development. This did go to the Planning Commission, April 18th, and was voted, recommended for approval to the City Council 4 to 0 based on the request of the applicant. Previously, previous approval of the PUD with minor amendments being presented at this time, the plan to develop an infill residential site in the size of proposed lots and type of housing planned within the development. Was a request as well to wave sidewalks on one side of the street that was not recommended by staff and was not recommended by the Planning Commission based on the surrounding neighborhood, some of that having one-side sidewalk. But that is not in the ordinance. That would need to be amended to include that request.
Do I have any questions or concerns in the audience?
I do.
You don't like this?
Hey, Scott Zeiser, 114 Upper Flint Road. I am the developer of this project, and we've had many meetings. Eric's great to work with, and so is everybody down there downstairs. But the only issue is, is I'd like to see if I can variance on not having sidewalks on both sides. Cliff Road is a very busy street, which just comes off, has one sidewalk. The other side doesn't have a sidewalk. Just, it's going to be slow-moving traffic through there. It's just a residential area, pretty much dead in it right now unless it ever gets developed to the north, which who knows if it ever does. But all the sidewalks are on the south side. The residential lots would just be green space all the way if we didn't have to have sidewalks. So asking for a variance from the council for only sidewalks on one side. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel, comments?
I'm in favor of what he's asking for. In a low-traffic area, I think one side.
We're going to get to that, my friend.
Oh.
We're going to deal with that at hand. Are you good? We good? Can I get a motion?
You have a motion to close?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Hold on a minute.
Hold on, yeah.
Bob said he was interested in amending. I don't think we can close the hearing until he amends.
You wouldn't do it until afterwards.
We need to close the hearing.
You have to close first.
Close first and then amend.
Yeah, you have to introduce it and then amend if you're going to.
I apologize.
No, you don't even need to apologize.
He doesn't want to apologize? All right.
Yeah, I do.
Motion to, motion to close.
Target. Thank you, my friend. Kathleen?
Wilson, I'm sorry. Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an amendment to ordinance number 3403, an ordinance creating the Arbor View Estates PUD.
Target.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
This is what you do unless you want to wait, do it at the next council.
So, yeah, Eric, how would you handle or address that desire to, to see sidewalk on only one side? Would you have to come up with some language to do that?
Yes, some language in the PUD we'd have to bring forward for consideration, or I guess the other option would be a code change for certain areas which would be separate from this. But for this individually, it'd be language within this that we'd want to add in.
So you would approve the first reading of this and then bring back proposed amended language at the second, at the second reading that would incorporate that?
Yeah, have that discussion at work session.
Let's take it to vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, moving forward on that one. Number 4, and on that, that was the first reading. Number 4 is a consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property locally known as 816 Valley Street from M1 Light Industrial to C3 Central Business District Downtown Mixed Use Zoning District. Mr. Teslin?
This is a request, rezone the property on Valley Street, 816 Valley from M1 Light Industrial to C3 Central Business District. The property is bound by C3 on the north and east sides, and bound by M1 on the west and south sides. This is a, fit within the future land use map of this area. It is designated as downtown mixed use on our future land use map from the conference plan, which allows for a mix of residential and commercial uses. The M1 zone only allows commercial or light industrial uses. The C3 zone does allow commercial and residential uses. So based on the proposal or request of the property owner to redevelop this building to include residential, it would need to be rezoned to C3 to allow that. This did go to the Planning Commission on April 18th, and they did vote 4 to 0 to recommend approval of the rezoning based on the planned use of the property, the location adjacent to the existing C3, and the current designation on the future land use map. So this would, somewhat of a straightforward rezoning, just the single property which is adjacent to C3 districts on two sides.
Does anybody from the audience have any problems? I see none. Mr. Judd?
Stewart Judd, 6264 Summer Street. I've done a lot of work on this building myself as far as for the city, as far as boarding up and mowing and so forth. So if they're going to redo this end of the building, what's going to become of the other end of the building? Is it still going to be torn up for vandalism?
The request that's here this evening is just for the portion that isn't currently zoned C3. This would get the whole property area zoned C3, so it would all be, I think the intent of the developer is to be able to have the option for the whole property to be redeveloped.
Okay.
So.
Thanks. Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Counsel?
Motion to close, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the property locally known as 816 Valley Street from M1 Light Industrial to C3 Commercial Business District Downtown Mixed Use Zoning District.
Second.
Moved in second. Thank you, sir. Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done. Number 5, we have consideration of plans and specifications for the demolition of the property located at 715 Shakkacon Drive, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Teslin?
This is the former Parkview, Parkview Care Facility located on the south end of town, just adjacent to Dankworth Park on Shakkacon Drive. Kind of hard to see there, but in the star area. The city acquired this through the abandoned property program, has sat vacant for a number of years, did asbestos inspection on it, and does contain a lot of asbestos and is in a very poor condition on the inside. We are looking to receive bids on June 1st. The estimate from the engineer for asbestos payment demo was 391,000. Currently, we have a little over 300,000 in our funds, so we're going to see what the bids come back at. We are working with DNR on some of the asbestos funds as well that they have available. This is a property that we're looking to demolish and move, and then subdivide into three residential lots for sale as new single-family residential lots, and capture that funds to go back into the program as well.
Yes, sir. Any questions or comments from the audience? Anyone except for Leon Shahean? Come on, Leon.
Better luck next time. Leon Shahean, 1821 Mall Pleasant Street. How come we got ahold of this thing in the first place?
This is purchased specifically to demo it and to, and to get rid of it. It was in a position where no one was doing anything with it, and it is, it was looked at as a way to...
Improve the neighborhood.
Improve the neighborhood.
Well, if it has lots of asbestos, I would say that's an expensive way to do things. Can't we file a claim, the city file a claim against the previous owner, or how does that work?
Not at this point, as we're the owners of it.
Yeah.
We couldn't write at this point as being the current owners of the building. Like, through small claims, we could have claimed up to $5,000 potentially.
Doesn't really touch the...
No.
I think what happens on that, Leon, is, again, these buildings, if, if somebody can walk away from it, but the city can't because it's still in city limits. And we've got this great big huge building now full of asbestos, and what do you do? I mean, I hear what you're saying, but, you know...
You know, if I leave a mess, I get sued. And it seems like other parties are able to work, walk away from one heck of a mess, and, you know, they don't even get slapped on the hands for it.
I think the previous owner was an LLC shell corp, that there weren't a tremendous amount of assets there to go after regardless. Was a process where we're going to be in, not in great shape to do something with them. This is a way to, the council knew this. This is a way to, to take steps to clean up an area. It wasn't going to happen otherwise.
Property changed hands a couple times before the city acquired it, two or three times in the last few years.
Really, the, the steps that we had available would be to demo the pro, let, let it stay in the other property owner's hands. If it was a truly a hazard that we needed to deal with, we could have done the, the work ourselves if they weren't willing to do it and assessed it against the property. But it would have been assessed against the property, and would have then sat as a vacant lot that no one would have the willingness to touch because it had a huge deficit attached to it.
We do seem to keep getting into these things. We did that with the old Murray Works facility at the east... We did that with the old Murray Works facility at the east, north, west end of downtown. That seems to be a project that doesn't stop giving, and we, it's expensive. I guess there's no way we can get around this. Are there other funds available from the DNR? At one time, there's super fund sites and monies available. What happens there?
We're seeking some asbestos cleanup funds, but it's limited to $25,000
Ouch.
For that. We did have a preliminary estimate a couple years, or a year and a half ago of $200,000, so the engineer's estimate, as we'll see later on, isn't always what the actual cost is gonna be, and we're confident, or hopeful it'll be less than that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Leon, what it boiled down to for me was, we continue to have expenses of cleaning this up, having to call somebody to cut the grass and maintain it and board it up. Boarding would get taken down, the grass would continue to grow and that sort of thing. It was try to find a way to end that expense and try to get some kind of return on the investment. That was take the property, tear it down, and turn it into three lots.
Clean up the neighborhood.
Cleaned lots that can be redeveloped.
And really, as we move forward, having that developed with three separate residential lots will be much more, will fit into that neighborhood much more than what the existing facility does. This is a step that, in regards to the future of that area, it is much more in conformity with what lies around it than doing, even doing a rehab of the existing facility.
Well, I recognize it's an eyesore. It's just a pocket sore to keep funding these kinds of things. Like I say, if it were me and I had a mess in my yard, I'd be assessed for it and have to pay for it. It's getting irritating, and other people don't pay their share.
Thank you, sir.
Kelly Hall, 816 Valley. Actually, I have some information on this property. I've read the asbestos report. First of all, it doesn't seem like an accurate report to me. I'm an environmentalist, and I read it, and caulking asbestos and window caulking, you know, it's gonna cost $400,000 to demo this building, and you're gonna recoup $30,000 per lot, and $25,000 in asbestos removal is really not gonna cover it. Also, I'm wondering where these bids are on the city's site. I don't see any RFPs for requests for bids or anything. So, you're accepting bids on June 1st, but shouldn't you have that RFP on the city's website? The scope of work? On what exactly is involved in that? Thirdly, it's a company that's an LLC that's here in the state of Iowa, and she's fairly well-known, and she buys up tax sale properties. So, there were two lots. The back portion is much more damaged than the other parcel in the front, but that was two separate owners, and one is quite well-known here in the state of Iowa, you know? They also had an opportunity to develop this property instead of, you know, the cost of the city to tear it down. So, I mean, it's a pretty nice facility, and asbestos and ceiling tiles, there are no ceiling tiles in that building currently, and it's also not boarded up. Just so you know, Mr. Scott.
Any other comments from the audience?
Stuart Judd, 6264 Summer. Again, this is one of those other properties that I've been taking care of for the city for quite some time. If anybody's been close to it, no. If you look at the structure of the building, it's not worth saving. It's cracked, it's falling apart, and you walk by there, I boarded up so many windows, kids keep breaking them out, the smell is ferocious, and I thank you guys for doing something with that junk.
Good. Thank you, sir. See no others?
I have something to say. I don't see any of those boarded up whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
Glad to see it go down.
I'm gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna close this one down, and I appreciate you, sir, but I'm gonna close this one down, we're gonna move forward. There's nobody else, other new comments? Appreciate it.
Motion to close, Your Honor.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the demolition of the property located at 715 Shakkacon Drive, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, nice to have it. Next, we have consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Agency Street Widening Project West End. Mr. McGregor?
Before you have plans and specs for the widening of Agency Street between Roosevelt, well, the whole, the project's scope is between Roosevelt and West Burlington Avenue. The actual widening of the road will be between just west of the railroad tracks to West Burlington Avenue. This project is a RISE fund project as well as a traffic safety improvement project, and the remainder is funded by TIF. If you want to go to the next slide. This drawing here kinda shows the breakdown of the widening process. There's a new track, a new crossing at the tracks that'll be installed, and then from there west to West Burlington Avenue, it'll be widened to handle two lanes, traffic either way, and then a center turn lane. And there is new lights that'll be installed at the intersection by Hobby Lobby and the old Walmart. I don't know if that actually has a road name, but the estimated project is 1.4 million, of which a RISE will cover 80%, and then TSIP is about $99,000. So, depending on the portion out, RISE will cover about $88,000, and it will cover the rest. See bid sometime mid-June, and then start work. Any questions?
Completion by early November? Hope so. Any questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
6264 Summer, Stuart Judd. I got a question about that widening the road. He's talking about by the tracks, by the lools, pretty close to the lools, right? Yeah. Okay. My question is to you, why, or whoever, why do we need to widen that, take taxpayers' money to widen that road? I mean, it's pretty good flow right now.
Mr. McGregor, I'm gonna have you come up and address.
Like I said, this project is a RISE-funded project through the state DOT in association with the expansion done at General Electric. The $1.4 million project estimate, 80% of that is covered by a RISE grant that was given to the city by the DOT, so it's the reason why the road surface is in fairly bad shape, and then lanes are less than desirable width, so.
Yes, sir.
Keith, 127 Greenwood Drive, Burlington. All I can say is, before you spend any money on anything to suit the General Electric Company, I would make sure they're still gonna be here for a while first, because that is still very up in the air, and the building is up for sale with no guarantee that any future buyer will stay there. So, before you agree to do that, I would wait to see what's actually gonna happen with that property first.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Yes, sir.
Leon Shayhan, 1821 Malplezance Street. A little different question from me, for once. When was the last time that rail spur was ever used? I don't think there's been anything on north of Champion, or south of Champion for 10 years, and a rail crossing is awful expensive.
Thank you, sir. Nobody else from the audience? Counsel? I just wanna say, just for the record, it's still good work that we're getting done. There's no way that we'd be able to get even just a piece of it done for our share in it. I'm satisfied with the grant on this one, and I think it's a, I think it's a good move, so.
The question that comes up in regards to GE is a valid question. It's one that we asked the chamber about as this process has been moving through. GE is still planning on doing the expansion that's associated with this? This division of GE is up for sale. That being said, this is one of their most productive plants within their system, and as we talked with them about what the potential are, you never know what happens after a plant sale, but given that this is, within this division of GE, this is one of their best performing plants, the likelihood is this plant will stay open moving forward. Regardless, we're looking at, and GE is looking at this expansion occurring and moving into the future. As has been mentioned, the road is in, it's in rough shape in that area.
Yes.
And getting the improvement to that, just to have the base roadway redone is gonna cost us the figure that our local contribution on this project is, or more. It's a great partnership opportunity to be able to work with one of our local industries and to be able to get an improved roadway. Not only improved roadway, an improved traffic signalization at that entrance, and that even though there isn't a need to widen to a, with a turn lane in the center, the way that traffic throttles, the roadway throttles down is problematic for traffic flowing through there, and so you are getting improved roadway at the same time.
I actually just had another question. Is this going to comply with our complete streets?
It will not have, it will not have bike traffic on it. You know, there will be the installation of sidewalks as part of it, and that does fit within it. And some of what Complete Streets takes a look at is what's the cost feasibility
Right.
Of being able to accommodate the addition of a bike lane with what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I see a lot of people riding bikes. That's really busy.
Yeah, with traffic counts in the 12,000-plus bracket, that arterial road probably wouldn't meet complete streets, but there will be a sidewalk on the north side all the way to Roosevelt, and then it'll actually cross over to the south side, so connect it with a sidewalk.
Okay.
You good?
Yes.
Counsel?
Good. Can I get a motion? Got it. Motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2017 Agency Street Widening Project West End.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 erosion mitigation at corner of North Street and North Fourth Street. Mr. Mack?
The project before you is to help take care of a problem that was generated from last September's major rain event. What happened was, the storm sewer in that area became inundated, and it went over the edge and caused massive erosion. Questioning the sidewalk in that area. Initially, the thought was to do a retaining wall, estimated at a budget about $750,000. After Cleanear and Associates took a look at it, they did some boring samples and came to the conclusion that soil nails with a mesh would be an alternative at a much lower rate. I don't know this slideshow, if you want to just pop it forward. Here is a drawing showing, at the very top is a secondary, kind of an emergency storm sewer. Should the current storm inlet and pipe there not be able to handle it, it will bump up to the, it's a higher elevation, so it'll only be used in higher rain flows, and it will take it down in a pipe down towards Bluff Road. And then on the bottom image, you can see where they have that darkened shaded area. They will be putting a mesh or, you know, galvanized steel mesh in there, and then be tapping soil nails, is what they call them, but essentially they're rods that they'll bore in and drill into the bedrock and
Do you know how big these rods are?
I don't know how big these rods are. No, I don't. Sorry.
Just asking a question, Nick. You don't gotta get an attitude about it. I was just curious, you know, when they're gonna have the, when we're gonna have more information on the, how they're gonna set that up and what the rods are gonna look like, what that's gonna
I don't know that for sure. I mean, during the specific, we probably, it's actually probably specified in the specs, but I don't know about that one.
I wanna see that, that's gonna be crazy. I wanna check that out.
Okay. And then the estimated cost is substantially less than the initial projected retaining wall at 750, down to 311, so. There is, it's a little steep in that area, so that could cause some higher pricing just because of the complexity of trying to get stuff over the edge of the cliff, so.
Do you have any questions or concerns from the audience?
I am Joanne Bauer, and I live at 2523 Sunny Side, and I have a question about this project here. Who owns that land? Do we own the land?
The city does.
But wasn't there a big cut on that land? That person, somebody cut all that trees down and everything?
I thought that was somewhere else, wasn't it?
I think it was on this land. Was that house, and he went in and cut everything down so he'd have a better view?
I thought that was down the
Nick's car.
And then, so there was nothing to hold that?
I got an answer to that.
He's gonna answer.
There is another location that was, had erosion problems from that same event. That is off of Sixth and Sycamore. We, the city actually owned, has a sewer pipe that broke loose and caused some erosion problems. I do think that that parcel of land where that home is, they did cut a bunch of trees back, they will likely have some erosion concerns over the future, but we have taken care of our issues. But to answer this question, that is city right of way there, so.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Counsel?
Down here.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2017 erosion mitigation at the corner of North Street and North Fourth Streets.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done. Number eight, we have a consideration of, and consideration of an ordinance amending section 137.08 of chapter 137 Sidewalk Regulations of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
The change in this ordinance before you is to strike out the current 50-inch minimum and replace it with 48-inch minimum, and also allowing the public works director, myself, the ability to match existing. We have some 36-inch sidewalk in town, and if someone's pouring a panel, it just makes sense to replace it back to match existing. The reason for this change, with new staff on board, we saw a little bit of an issue with the way that the ordinance read, and from a ADA and SUDAS standpoint, they call for 48-inch for all their sidewalk, along with the actual implementation of 50-inch sidewalk as the minimum, and having people pour back 50-inch sidewalks, butting against 48-inch sidewalks where they're replacing panels. And without the latitude in the ordinance to allow me to match that existing, I thought it was necessary for a change, so.
Sounds good. Any comments or concerns from the audience? Mr. Judd?
Stuart Judd, 6264 Summer. Okay, I only have one question, and it's for the city entirely here. I understand this project on agency, okay, good, good job on that. But with all the money going into all these street fixing, or whatever you guys are doing here with these plans and everything, I know what he's talking about on that hole, definitely, definitely needs done, but my question is, and nothing against you, Chris, is there anything we can do with the potholes in the street and the raised bumps in the street? You know, I mean, they're all over. They're all over. We need to do something with that.
All right, we're gonna, we'll be able to address all that good stuff afterwards. All right, we're going to, we'll be able to address all that good stuff afterwards. On this one, this is a, you know, it's a big city, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you got a house, you know how that is. You start in the living room, and then you got stuff doing in the kitchen. It's one of those deals, man, this is a big city. I mean, it's just the way it is. There's always going to be some bumps somewhere, there's always going to be a pothole. That, you know, we're just going to try to, we're going to try to plug them up and try to drop them down.
Yeah, maybe you can drop them sideways.
Anything else from the council?
Motion to close?
Second.
Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye. Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending section 137.08 of chapter 137 Sidewalk Regulations of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done. Ordinances.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Spruce Street right-of-way located west of South Main Street, and a portion of alley right-of-way located north of Spruce Street and the west of South Main Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
No changes from the previous reading. Again, this is a request by Michael and Sally Campbell to vacate right-of-way adjacent to property they own at 629 South Main and 223 Angler Street, being the alley to the east of their property on Angler and the portion of Spruce Street right-of-way south of their property on Main Street. This would maintain access for all other properties to their existing properties through the alley, as well as the home at 213 Spruce Street. This would be combined with adjacent property owned by the Campbells. Purchase price for the property being vacated is $3,000, and this was recommended approval by the Planning Commission. Again, through the alley, there is a retaining wall on the backside of the properties on Main Street, so there is no direct access from the alley to 611 or 629. This would, again, allow enlargement of the property owned by the applicants.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel?
Down here.
I have a motion to amend. To amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Spruce Street right-of-way located west of South Main Street, and a portion of alley right-of-way located north of Spruce Street and west of South Main, Burlington, Iowa, to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Spruce Street right-of-way located west of South Main Street, and a portion of alley right-of-way located north of Spruce Street and west of South Main Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved in second. Now, let's vote on the amendment. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done.
Your Honor, I have a motion for final adoption of an ordinance providing the division of taxes levied on taxable property in Deer Point Estates, urban and rural area pursuant to section 403.19 of Iowa code.
Second.
Moved in second. Jim?
This is Deer Point subdivision. Ryan Nagraki's been working on this and working with the council over the last several months on this proposed development of 34 lots. This ordinance itself is specifically for the division of taxes authorizing the setting up of a TIF fund for the project. That being said, the developer contacted us this afternoon and requested that we not move forward with this. He's decided not to move forward with using TIF financing on this project. I'm unsure of what his actual plans are moving forward, but he has stated at this time he does not, he's not proceeding with this. Recommended step to take with that in mind would be, if you were to honor his, where he's at with this project at this time, would be to defeat the third reading. If he were to want to come forward in the future, he certainly could. It would be a new process.
Okay. Since we have that news and it's been made public, let's just, just ready to move forward, so. Kathleen? I mean, Jim, did you have anything to say too?
No.
Okay. Kathleen?
Did you get a comment?
You're, ask it. Any comments from the council?
Nah, I mean, for what? We're shutting it down, and if they want to comment, they can afterwards. We're about done. Let's go ahead and vote. Kathleen?
Fleming?
I'm not sure I know a voting on here.
No.
Just no.
If you were, if you were to honor what Mr. Nagraki has asked for, you would vote no on this.
No, then, thank you. I'm going to be sure here.
McCambell?
No.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Okay. unanimous no's, we don't get that very often.
I know, I know, no, we don't.
I have a resolution approving the final plat of Leesizer subdivision.
Second.
Request to subdivide a existing lot between Dane and Weemer Street from one lot into three lots. It's properties located north off of Mount Pleasant Street, again, between Weemer and Dane Street. And it is a minor subdivision with no newer infrastructure required for the property and being less than four lots, it just comes directly to council, so there's no recommendation from the Planning Commission on this. But during the development review, there were some comments, concerns about the width of Weemer Street. It is a very narrow street and a very long roadway without a turnaround. A lot of the streets off of Mount Pleasant Street were developed prior to current codes and standards, so there are not adequate fire access turnarounds on the ends of Dane Street, Weemer Street, or Deer Run. So there were some concerns with emergency access to the site and the ability to turn around on a very narrow street, especially for the fire department. They did have, want that statement or concern recognized, as well as just whether there's a consideration of a turnaround, whether a turnaround or second access to the site, which this lot has limited ability to provide access between Dane and Weemer with the existing home on Dane Street. That was the only comment through the process, was the concern over access to the site. Other than that, it does meet our subdivision standards for lot width and size of the lots.
Any comments or issues from the audience?
Leesizer, 6125 Peg Town Road, Minneapolis. The only thing I want to say about this is I'm taking a property that was a rental property and turning that into a single-family home, and then providing two almost one-acre lots for also single-family homes, estimated to be approximately $250,000 houses. I think that is improving the neighborhood, and I'm not asking for any tax dollars, so I hope you consider it.
You're all right.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience? Counsel?
For me?
I think she's all right. You guys?
Good.
Okay.
I'm concerned about those concerns brought up, and it's, we're not looking at a huge, dense development here. It's all right for me.
You good?
Yes.
You're good. Kathleen? Let's vote it out.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the Flint River Trail Phase One South Trail Project.
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
We did accept bids on the trail project on Thursday here at City Hall. As you remember or recall, this is for Phase One South. The portion from the ramp behind Big Muddy is up to approximately Oak Street on Bluff Road. The engineer's estimate is determined by French Reniker, who's working with us on this project, was $735,000. They did have some concerns about estimates just based on the difficulty of the site. It is a narrow road, and there is a large embankment on the east side, dropping down to Riverside Park, so they recognize that with their estimate. Fortunately, through the bids that we received back, a couple contractors felt that it wasn't as big of a concern as our engineer had felt. We did receive three bids on the project. MJ Daily Construction from Burlington being the low bid at $440,000. We also received bids from Mike Nelson for $42,000, and Levity or Construction for $774,000. So, based on the low bid, well below our estimate and below our budget price, we would like to move forward with this project. The contractor would like to move forward as soon as he can, as well, to get started on the project and get moving on this. Currently, the total funds available are $848,000. We do have two REIT grants in the total of $300,000, a state rec grant, a Wellmark grant, as well as city sales tax and local fundraising. We are discussing whether, I guess, depending on any change orders that are made, if there's addition, ability to expand the scope of the project through some of our REIT funds, that would reduce some of our future costs that we have planned in FY '20 and '21. Phase One North, the portion from Oak Street to Cass Street is the remaining phase. The state rec grant only allows construction on this phase, but some or other funds might be more flexible, but we'll work through that process to see if we can get more fund and reduce the cost down the road as well. But we are very happy with the bids coming in, $300,000 less than our budget, our estimate.
We're always happy when bids come in less. Any comments or concerns from the audience? Counsel? Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done. This is the time where we'll entertain comments from the audience. If there's something we haven't discussed, we'll hear from you now. Is there anyone?
Yeah, my name's Tammy McElroy. I live at 611 North Garfield. Just within the last couple of days or so, you, I don't know who the city has hired to come clean out yards that, obviously, I didn't do it right. We had a bunch of weeds and everything. We had a lion come cut a tree down. They never picked up the wood, and the people that came in and cleaned the yard up picked up all their wood. I had a stack of firewood for our fire pit and to take when we go camping. They took all of that. We had a mulberry tree on the corner of our shed. They cut that down. They killed my resurrection lilies at the corner of the shed, and this is stuff that, you know, they didn't have to do.
Where's your address?
611 North Garfield. And then, the way the property goes, there's 609 North Garfield, has spruce bushes, and they were trimming those up. I mean, I understand, I am responsible for part of this, but some of the stuff that they have cleaned up was not my responsibility. And I've heard you guys are going to add it to our tax liens, or our taxes, for the quarter or the half a year or whatever. So how do I go about finding out what they're going to charge and reducing those charges?
Eric, do you know what's going on with this?
I know we did have a nuisance complaint on the property, so I'll have to talk to Matt on it. I assume this is a nuisance abatement through our process. We do send a notice with the bill amount prior to anything coming to council for assessment, so I'll have to check on that and see what that amount is, and talk to our inspector on what was done there, and check out some of the photographs. But we will do that before anything comes forward to council.
Okay.
And you can, you can call down to City Hall as well, and somebody can get you some information. You can ask for Eric Teslin, but somebody can get you some information so you can move forward and get everything all squared away, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you for being so courteous. I know you're a little stiff for sitting so long. It's been a long meeting tonight. Anybody else from the audience, any comments or concerns? Yes, sir? You stiff too?
I have something very positive that I want to share with you, and I hope you'll endorse and go along with this program. This is something I'm starting on my own. All of my funds, I'm promoting this with or without your endorsement, and I'm going to go ahead and do it. It's something that's never been done here in Burlington. It's been done in other cities and has worked very well. With all the negativity that we've heard, especially in the last election, and the division between people in this town, and people coming up here and being angry about one thing or the other, or, and whatnot, and, like, I agree with the mayor. Burlington is a great place to live, work, and play. I agree with that 100%. This has been my home for over 27 years. My wife is a native, born and bred here, graduated from BHS. My son graduated from BHS. I love this town. I love Burlington. So on my own accord, I went ahead and up to 5,000 of these, I am giving away-
Right on.
I love Burlington bumper stickers. I am paying for this, like I said, out of my own pocket, free of charge. Up to 5,000 residents can get these from me, and I'm hoping with your endorsement, I can place these for free of charge at the library and other city, you know, places owned by the city to allow the citizens, if they choose, to have one of these. I know a lot of people don't like to put them on their cars anymore, but if you put them on your front door or on your front window of your home to display that you love Burlington, I think this would be a great promotion for our town, a positive thing in the right direction for once, that I think all, everyone could get on board and agree with, you know, that we love Burlington because it is our home. And you love it here too, after you've been here, you know. I mean, so, like I said, like, this is a program that I'm going ahead and doing with or without anyone's endorsement, and I just wanted to bring it forward to your attention. And like I said, it's free of charge to, up to 5,000 citizens here in the city of Burlington. And hopefully, I can put these in places, like I said, that are publicly owned. I've also contacted Downtown Partners, and I've already, six businesses today have already put them in their windows, as well as on display to give away free of charge to-
Well done.
-city of, to residents of the city of Burlington. So I am doing this on my own, as well, like I said. I am going forward, I'm going to keep contacting businesses, I am going to go to the Chamber of Commerce, and I intend to go to the Hawkeye. If the Hawkeye's not listening tonight, I intend to go to the Hawkeye tomorrow morning and speak with them as well to see if they can endorse this in the newspaper. Because like I said, this is free of charge, and this is something great. I love Burlington. And if you don't mind, I'd like to present each one of you-
I'd love to have one.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You have to get ahold of me, so we can make sure that you get more than just the 5,000. I'm in on that. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Deale. That's fantastic, and I'll tell you, we need more people speaking out and letting everybody know Burlington's a great place to live, work, and play. No place is perfect, but it's a fantastic community we got here. We got people like you spreading that word. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the, from the audience, any comments or concerns tonight? You guys have been lovely tonight. Even Keith Tarrell was nice tonight. Mr. Tisland?
Just a reminder, we have a public open house tomorrow at the library from 6:00 to 8:00 on Emerald Ash Bore, talking about private ash trees. As I mentioned before, we've kind of gotten through the trees in the right-of-way in the parks dealing with ash, but a lot of the issues coming forward will be on private property and how do residents identify ash trees, deal with ash trees that become a hazard and a nuisance. We're going to have staff on hand to talk about some of the issues, as well as some contractors there that individuals could talk to if they have questions or concerns about how to deal with ash trees as well. So, anyone, everyone's welcome between 6:00 and 8:00 at the library tomorrow night, May 16th, and encourage people to come down if they have a tree in their yard, don't know what it is, or think it's an ash tree, come down and hopefully be able to answer some questions.
Good deal, good deal. Kathleen?
I don't have anything.
All right. Annie?
I've got a few things.
You've got a lot of stuff.
I know.
You always got something.
It's because it's getting warmer, there's so much going on. I was able to participate in a fundraiser on-
I bet you took a pain in the face.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And they use premium whipped cream, so it was hard to get off. And that was for fundraiser for the Special Olympics, and a lot of people, I, that's just an amazing event, how many people turn out for that and how giving everyone is. It's just crazy. It's good to see.
I did it with Darren Grimshaw like three years ago. It was, it was big then, too.
Yeah. I also did the bridge run. That was fun.
You did the bridge run?
Yes. I didn't see you. Where, where, where were you?
Tim was supposed to pick me up. I waited.
Oh, dang.
I just stopped vibing like that, you know, we're gonna do a bridge run.
And then, so for this week, though, we've got all kinds of stuff going on. This Wednesday is, if you're into chamber music, there is some music happening from 12:15 to 12:45, and it's like a lunchtime. You can bring your lunch and enjoy it and have, you know, listen to some good music. And it's at the First United Methodist Church. Thursday is, of course, the farmer's market with the extended hours of 4:30 to 7:30.
Right on.
Friday is cruise night. Everyone's excited for that. That's from 5:00 to 9:00. And then Saturday, Friends of the Library, library used book sale.
Yes. When is that?
When is that?
Yes.
Saturday.
Yes.
Yep. And that's like an all-day thing, 8:00 to 5:00. Get some books. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
I'm gonna pass tonight. I want to, I'm waiting to hear about the city manager and Eric Tisland's results in their...
Get a troublemaker tonight. All right. Um, I made a note to myself. Let me, let me pass on to you real quick. Oh, we had a, we had a meeting at the library this weekend. That went really, really well, I thought. What I got to, couldn't stay for the entire deal, but some really great people got to meet, and just trying to figure out the future of the library as the world is changing, was really nice, and I can't find my note. I have no idea. It was important, too, I thought. I'll pass it on to you.
Can't find it. There.
What'd you say?
File under I. Yeah, I can find it if I'm...
Go ahead. I've, I've got nothing. I got, oh, I do want to say Happy Late Mother's, Happy Mother's Day to every mother out there. And I do want to say, I gotta say that, and then, and I do want to say this, too. Even if your mother wasn't the greatest, you're still here. And, you know, I know people that, that say, I'll leave it at that, but, you know. Your mother might not have been the greatest, but you're still here, and you got to experience life, so, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. That's it.
I say the same thing, and I'm not saying any more at this time. But I'll talk later.
You serve the right.
I serve the right.
Mr. Five-Year Man?
Yeah.
I do appreciate that. That's, that's nice. You surprise me when you do that at the beginning. I see everything else on the agenda, and you don't have that on there.
That was my favorite part, was surprising.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. You had a couple other folks who took the pie in the face this weekend. Chief Trexel was willing to do that. Major Grimshaw also participated this year, so that's neat to see, folks from our force who are out being involved in these things. And I don't know if I miss anyone else, but I know that those two were involved as well. And when you talk about the bridge run, don't forget that Chief Trexel did run in that.
Oh, did he?
He, he was...
I'm sorry.
He was, he was right behind me. I think he was pretty... So, he was right there, too. I think that Eric was gonna beat me, and he was afraid of what the results might be, and he claimed that he had a muscle pull.
Ooh.
So I did, I was able to still beat him and hold that streak. So, as you, you go to it, I don't owe any meals again this year, somehow remarkably. Tomorrow morning, the Iowa Army ammunition plant is, is having their change of command ceremony at 10:30 in the morning. I don't know if anyone from the council was planning on being there. We do have a couple of staff members who will be attending that. The Iowa Army ammunition plant also every year recognizes Memorial Day week, weekend. And so if you're able to be involved in that ceremony, please make sure that you, you take advantage of that. Did you have something, too? The next work session will not be next week. We do have five Mondays this, this month, and being that that is Memorial Day, our actual work session will be on Tuesday, May 30th at 4:30. Also, and I guess the last thing, the chamber, I did want to put a note out, they'll be taking, doing their Washington DC legislative trip, June 12th to 14th. I don't know if anyone was planning on attending that or not, but that is their, their opportunity to, this, this session for, I'll be attending, and really, the, the big thing that's, there's this more discussion about infrastructure potentially being an issue, and it's something that we as a, as a group will be, make sure that we highlight as we're out in DC. I don't know if anything will actually come of that, but at least we want to make sure that we take advantage of the opportunity. Nick?
As you may have noticed, Division in Libra is currently in red flash. I just asked for some patience. The program, you know, in that is, is fairly old. It runs off MS-DOS, so it's, it's difficult for us to reprogram with the current operating system, so.
Actually, it's, it's better that way, actually. Man, I, I had some people say, I wish it would just stay like that.
Really?
Yeah, I'm serious. I was surprised, but it's been, it's been a little slow as of late, so. I wasn't talking to Shahan either. If that's, if that's it, I think we're good, right? We're good. Can I get a motion?
Your honor, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Soggy.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned. We've got Leon Shahan. All right.